Let's convene the August ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Marquette Township Planning Commission at seven P. M. Oh, let's do a roll call.
Steve Hakenin, Lake Enchantment.
To my left.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Uh, okay, so the next item is approval of the agenda. Now, this, uh, presents a little bit of a clumsy or awkward thing because I have a motion to amend the agenda to add an item as item six C. And there has been correspondence back and forth today about it, and I'm not going to argue with anybody about anything that was said in that. I just was asked by three neighbors of mine who live on Eagles Nest Road to, uh, bring this before the planning commission. Whether it's properly before the planning commission or not, that's, uh, could be open to debate, but I'm not necessarily going to debate it. I just, uh, necessarily then, uh, to keep my promises to our, our, my neighbors, I will make a motion to amend, um, the agenda to include as item six C, the following topic, quote, preliminary discussion of stormwater runoff slash drainage issues and wetland infill issues on Eagles Nest Road, close quote.
Eric, did you get, understand Jason's?
Here, I brought a copy of his.
His recommendation, or if we should add it this time, or address it in a different manner?
Here's his email.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I would leave it up to the planning commission. Um, not to get too deep into discussion about it right now, but it is within the state's purview.
Well, the only thing on, the only thing on the table right now is a motion to amend the agenda. It could fail for lack of a second, or it could get seconded, and then it could fail because it's only got one vote, or it could pass. But that's really the only thing we have to talk about right now. And then we could have, you know, then if it's one way or the other, we can move on to the other items of the agenda first, and then, uh, you know, as I said, I didn't intend, even if, if it is adopted, uh, as a agenda item, I didn't intend to take up a lot of time with it tonight. I just wanted to bring it to the attention, and we can incorporate any comments or emails as the planning commission deems appropriate, uh, as part of the, uh, discussion.
So why add it as an addendum as opposed to just an additional comment? By planning, like, to talk about it?
Well, because if it's on the, I, I would think if it's on the agenda, then it, I think it's more form, well, anyway, just, just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm just.
It's more, it's more formal, and at least it's been raised as an agenda item, and then we, if it's, uh, if the planning commission would consider, uh, deferring any further discussion to an additional meeting, or, uh, to, uh, require or request any additional consultation with anybody, I think it would just be more appropriate to have it, and then it would be old business at a future time if it was continued. That's just my impression, but.
Works, we will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Um, I think we can take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we can add that. All right. So now, um, motion to approve, uh, the minutes from a, uh, the previous meeting of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, public comment, is there any public comment before we move on to the agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business, item six A. This is, uh, a request for a special use permit public hearing for a ground-mounted solar energy system located here on the township, uh, property, and, uh, we'll, we'll let the, text in item six A speak for itself. We have with us, uh, Ben from Solar Peninsula, uh, pronouncing, Peninsula Solar. Uh, and, uh, Ben, do you want to make any comments?
Sure, yeah, just for the record and to clarify what we're, we're doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm out of practice. I've only done this once before.
You're doing good.
There's some context here, and then I'll let Ben do it.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't mean to preempt your.
We, this is a special use permit application for, uh, a solar, ground-mounted solar energy system. Um, obviously, we staff at the township have been working with Peninsula Solar to put together this application. Uh, the system itself will be on the same property as this building sits. Um, we found it as the governmental entity appropriate to go through the special use permit process, even though those ordinance amendments are that close to being put into place as it is just best practice, I would say. Um, as far as I've seen, and Ben might be able to elaborate a little bit more on this, um, the system as proposed does comply with the ordinance amendments. Um, however, we're still going through that special use permit process, um, as it is best practice. So, um, staff would recommend scheduling a public hearing on Wednesday, September thirteenth at seven P. M. And Ben, if you have anything to add?
Sure. So, again, my name is Ben, I'm the general manager with Peninsula Solar, um, just here. Well, thank you for having us or being here to discuss this issue of, um, having the opportunity to install the system on the property here. Um, I just want to reiterate some of the things that I spoke about when we got approval for this project during the previous, um, committee meeting. Um, and so Solar's fully licensed, uh, electrical contractor, um, with the, you know, going through the process of pulling all of our permits through the county, doing the engineering for this project, and, you know, building this project, um, with the interests of the township, you know, management in mind and placing it exactly where is best appropriate for the array, and, um, you know, building it underneath the township codes and all of the national building codes and electrical codes that are required of us, and, you know, we have to do a top-notch install here and make this a great example for community members and, um, township members alike, so, um, appreciate the opportunity, and I'll be here again to address questions as they arise during the, uh, public comment period.
Uh, Ben, I have a question. Uh, is, is this solar array expected to supply all the power necessary for the daily operations of this building?
So this system is, we, with, uh, with, this system is designed in two parts, so we are restricted by the Marquette Board of Light and Power by the size of the system that we can install, um, and that is a twenty K. W., as it's written now, that language may change to allow for larger systems in the future. So we, based on the, uh, township building's energy bill, this system, I believe it's about, it's going to produce about half the energy needs for that building.
Great.
I don't have those numbers in front of me, so don't quote me on that, and, you know, we can, we should look at the records.
But it's a substantial amount.
But it's a substantial amount of that energy, um, and we're using the best technology that's available to us, so we're using, um, our proprietary racking that's built for our climate and manufactured here in, um, Harvey by a local fabricator, um, powder coated in Nigoni by, uh, new powder coating outfit that's opening there, um, and it's built, like I said, with this climate in mind, so it tilts to a very steep degree to allow snow to shed in the winter time, and we're using bifacial panels that collect, um, excess production from the rear of the array.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, all right, so, um.
Yeah, yeah, just one question, this is, I'm getting the weeds on this one. So will it, will it work in conjunction with the cities, uh, the, the power that's provided with the water light and power, that will provide the, and it'll work in conjunction which, with each other?
Yeah, so the, the system is a grid interactive system, so the solar, the D. C. current from the solar panels is fed through that conduit, um, through the conduit back to the inverter. The inverter ends that inverts that power to A. C. power, that power is fed directly into the building's electric panel. So as the lights are on and your A. C. units are on and all energy is being used throughout the day, that power is going to be fed directly to those loads. If those loads are satisfied, then only would power be sent back to the utility, and that's handled through the interconnection agreement and the oversight by the National Electric Code.
Okay, I know that, that the, the, the border light power has demand charges, which are separate above your, your basic rate, so it's, it's your peak, peak use that you pay your demand charges on? Will that eliminate this?
It'll, yeah, it'll help manage.
Drop those demand charges down?
It's solely based on solar production, but we know in the middle of the summertime when your energy usage is the highest, um, and the peak demand typically hits, it will help keep that, um, energy usage below the peak demand.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's huge for a facility like this.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, um, have, uh, a public hearing Wednesday, September thirteenth at seven P. M.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second, Pat.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move on to, uh, thank you, Ben, uh, let's move on to item six B. Eric, this is a, uh, special use permit public hearing request for a short-term rental, uh, located, I believe, at four ninety-five Brickyard Road.
Nope, so that's the applicant's.
Oh, that's the applicant.
Address.
Okay.
So this, yeah, the ad, the specific address is not in that agenda line item there.
Is the tax I. D. correct?
Tax I. D. is correct.
But the address is not.
The address is not included in the agenda line item.
Okay, but so the, the parcel tax I. D. of fifty-two oh eight three, three forty, fifty-two forty is for the seven-ten Ontario?
That is for the subject parcel.
Okay.
Okay, seven-ten Ontario.
Yep, so the proposed location is seven-ten Ontario. Um, we have received a complete application, uh, you will note the applicant, Tyler Govern, uh, owns another short-term rental that has been approved by the planning commission. Um, that one, I believe, I don't recall off the top of my head, but he does own another one. Um, he was planning on being here tonight, but he shared today with me that he was in a motorcycle accident, so he was unable to make it, but he does plan on coming to the public hearing should you schedule it tonight. So, I have, in, in your packet tonight is the application, you'll see the narrative there, um, and his supporting documents. Um, other than that, I've got nothing else to add, and staff would recommend scheduling a public hearing for September thirteenth at seven P. M.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion on item six B.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a, uh, public hearing for the proposed short-term rental at seven-ten, can you help me here?
Ontario.
Ontario Street for September thirteenth, same day?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, now moving on to the item six C, which was added, uh, to the agenda, and that item is preliminary discussion of stormwater runoff drainage issues and wetland infill issues on Eagles Nest Road. And briefly, I'll just reiterate what I shared with, uh, the staff planners today, and I think the, uh, commissioners were copied on that.
Yes.
I was approached, uh, I was having coffee on Sunday morning, I got a call from, uh, one of my neighbors at two eighty-six, Mayor Blackford, and she's very concerned, uh, she's built a beautiful house there, it's got to be over a million dollars just for the house, and she took very much care in, uh, drainage so that it would drain, her property would drain into the lake, uh, the, the runoff would drain into the lake. And for those of you familiar with Eagles Nest Road, uh, you know that everything on the, uh, lakeside of Eagles Nest Road is pretty much wetlands, and all the houses are built on parcels, uh, in and among wetlands. And so, um, we, from November through the first week of June, we have water running from the highland, which is on the west side of Eagles Nest Road, there's about a thirty-foot embankment going up to a highland area that then goes over to the, to the new five fifty, and that area collects, uh, heavy amounts of snow in the winter, and it, and, or even in the rainy season in the fall, and that water comes down from the highlands, uh, through a series of waterfalls that are, they're spaced about every, uh, two to four acres. And, um, then those waterfalls run into a ditch that runs north and south, uh, on the, uh, west border, or, yes, the west border of Eagles Nest Road. That drainage ditch then has various culverts, and there are about two per property that run under the road and then carry the water onto the homesteads on the lakeside of Eagles Nest Road. And that, uh, water burden is then, uh, goes through various channels and goes into the lake. And in addition to that, there is an old railroad bed that, that runs on the, uh, lakeside of, of Eagles Nest Road, and runs north and south. On each side of that, uh, railroad bed, there's a drainage ditch that carries water, uh, well, it depends, depends on what's happening, but it carries it, uh, north or south, and then there are channels that traverse and cut over that railroad bed, through that railroad bed at various spots, and it carries it into the lake. And this has been, uh, a situation that's existed for years. But as more development comes and more people, uh, build, uh, there's more, uh, concern about where the drainage is going to go. So anyway, um, Ms. Blackford, uh, is concerned because, uh, a piece of property at two eighty-four applied for a wetland permit to infill wetlands, uh, to, to, for a couple purposes. One, to put a driveway across these ditches that I've been talking about, the railroad ditches and so forth, and then to infill as a base for the, I don't know, I guess it's about fifteen hundred square foot house, something like that. And if you look at her property, you'll see that, uh, you know, for, from November to the first week of June, surrounding her is pretty much always wet and taking in running water from the highlands. So she's concerned, her concern was not so much with the, uh, destruction of a wetland, but her concern was that if there's, they build up this property up above the wetlands, because they're not going to, they're not going to sink their foundation into the wetlands, they're going to build it above, then that runoff is going to come and burden her property. And then next to her, uh, is a woman, uh, Kathy La Fortune, and Kathy, uh, is, her, her property doesn't extend all the way to the road, so this new piece of property will, uh, be between her and the road, and it will be in an area where water naturally sits and then percolates down to the, to the ground table. It's a wetland there. Okay, so she's also concerned that she's going to get inundated. Then a little bit further down the road, there's a, a man named Mike, uh, Erzinger at two sixty-six, and he also has that concern because any burden that would be imposed on those two properties could flow down to him. Mike also has a concern because between two fifty-four Eagles Nest Road and two sixty-six Eagles Nest Road, on the, uh, uh, highland side, on the west side, somebody has just bought six acres and plans to build one house, and the rumor is perhaps two, and they have already tried to take an end loader and do a, do a straight driveway up a thirty-foot cliff, and they weren't even able to get up, but what they've done is they used a natural gully, which normally carries water, so if they were going to put a driveway in there, that would just be a, a, a running conduit, it would force, uh, more water down. The other issue is, is that, uh, the ditch, okay, the ditch is maintained and is the responsibility of the Marquette Road Commission. And about two years ago, after a heavy rain, just after the snowmelt, uh, the, these ditches and the culverts were not able to handle the road, and it came over and washed out a lot of people's driveways and, and, and inundated some people's basements, and it was a big mess. But the ditch has never been properly maintained, and, for example, one thing that's a problem that Mr. Erzinger, Erzinger brought up, is that, um, when they are trying to move the snow in the wintertime after the plow plows all the snow up and it, it mounts up, uh, on the, on the, uh, on the lakeside, it just kind of pushes over and falls down into the lower land, but on the highland side, it banks up there, so they have to come with an end loader and take it and move it and then bring it over and dump it on the other side. But when they do that, they cave in the natural embankment and then bring down debris and rock and then fill that ditch up, uh, more. And so, to give you an idea of, of the force of these, of this, uh, runoff from this area here, when we had this event two years ago, and they wasn't able to handle it, the, the culverts that are, they're small culverts, they're not even, you know, very big, they're around twelve inches or fourteen inches, they weren't able to handle it, so the water went along the side of the culverts, under the, under the pavement of the road, and buckled the road, and now we have speed bumps all on up and down Eagles Nest Road. So it's an issue that has been developing, and if the, and so with this person that's planning to build up on the highland, unless they have a retention pond which never releases the water, unless they build one, all they're going to do is displace water, and it's going to cause more burden for the people below. So those were the concerns that were expressed to me. And there, I have another concern which is related, which was a personal experience of mine. Uh, about a year and a half ago, the property immediately north of mine, which is about a three and a half, four acre property, was bought by a young man, and he, uh, started out by installing a septic system and a wellhead, and he, uh, had Overstar do a raised septic bed. So he's, as I said, there's a railroad bed that goes north and south, and so his property is immediately north of mine, and when I get the runoff from the highland, it comes down and it goes through a, uh, it goes into this ditch here, and then it crosses over just at the end of my property into his property, and then because of gravity, even though it goes on his property, it flows back on mine, and I get about a foot of water in my backyard, but I can deal with that. I've learned, I've had some drains and so forth. But when he applied for the septic system with the Marquette County Health Department, and also he had Tri Media out there telling him where the wetlands were, so the only place they could put the wet, the, the septic system without interfering with the wetlands was on the, on the west side of this railroad bed. And so he was told by, when he, when he went to the Marquette, uh, County Health Department to say that you were going to do this, they said, "Well, you can't build it," and this is all hearsay, but this is what he told me, and it was verified by his supervisor, super, uh, his, uh, foreman from Overstar. The county health department said, "Well, yeah, you can build a raised septic system there, but you got to fill in seventy-five yards of that drainage ditch because it would, it drains into the lake." Well, okay, what were they thinking about filling in a seventy, seventy-five yards of a drainage ditch that carries water away from people's homes into the lake? They, so this is an example of silo thinking, and they don't, there's no comprehensive plan, one department's not talking to the other, one governmental agency is not talking to the other, and I understand that we're bound by law to certain parameters of authority, but it seems to me, uh, and I, and I thank, uh, I thank Jason for referring Ms. Blackford to Eagle, because Eagle had been notified about this wetland thing, and they're going to come out and do an inspection of her property tomorrow, that was very good, and I appreciate Jason's prompt response and Mr. Zappa's response and so on and so forth, but the, the long to short of it is, uh, the answer is, it's not my problem. Instead, I, I hear from, uh, Jason that, uh, the, the body that has to be contacted here is, um, oh, I gave that to you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was writing that.
That's okay, you can keep it. Uh, is the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Enforcement Agency. Okay, well, I don't know, who's in charge of that? And who, who, you know, don't we owe a duty to our township residents to help them out? And Jason was helpful with respect to the wetland, but the wetland thing is, it's an issue for environmental reasons, but it's not an issue in terms of property rights and damage to property. So, and the other thing I didn't understand is, uh, there was some comment by either, uh, uh, Jason or Roger that the Marquette County Road Commission is in charge of the roads and the ditches and so forth, which, okay, they are, but don't we have representation at the road committee meetings? Is that, or am I thinking, is this a different road committee?
There is the Township Road Committee, which is, call it subservient to the planning commission, and then there's the road commission.
Right, but does the township have a representative that attends the Marquette County Road Commission meetings, or any interaction with the Marquette County Road Commission?
We have routine interaction on a number of issues outside of just this one, um, as far as representation at meetings, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
That'd be up to, I think, the board.
Okay, well, I mean, so this is really what I, I was hoping to achieve, is just some, uh, commitment on the part of this body, because I get, you know, so here, here's the other thing, too. So, um, Roger Zappa said, and he's probably correct, that this body doesn't review, uh, site plans for any individual home, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if, what, somebody?
Well, I, I'm sorry to backtrack, but within certain parameters, that's correct. I mean, say, I'm struggling to come up, come up with an example here, but I guess there are certain instances where a site plan review might be required.
You need a special use permit for, for your construction, I guess, for your single, residential home, if you need something that requires a special use permit. Otherwise, your billing permits are, are through the township, but not, right, so.
Who does it go to? Who is, who, who in the township approves of billing permits?
No, that, they, they, they will issue a billing permit once the county's satisfied, I believe is, is the proper procedure.
Process would go, so say you've got a vacant parcel and you're building a new single-family home, you would come to us at the township to get zoning compliance approval and building permit. There's two different forms, we treat it as one application with one fee. Um, the county will not issue their billing permits until they know the zoning compliance permit from the local side, the township is approved.
Right.
And, and, and also as far as runoff, that you have, the, 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 the county has to be, uh, satisfied with the, the organization you talked about that deals with the runoff and.
Erosion control.
Erosion control, you have, they have to be satisfied that there's erosion control on that, you, you can't work within seventy-five feet of a water body without, you know, sediment control, all that kind of stuff. And I, and I think, you know, one of the issues you have is that the, you know, the, the township may not have a representative that goes to a plant, a road commission meeting, but we can have anybody from the community come to a planning commission meeting, and anybody from the community can go to a road commission meeting, too, and let them know what the issues are there and let them contemplate that. what the issues are there and let them contemplate that. Because I don't think you have to have a, a municipal representative go to the road commission when you got, when you have a complaint that, "Hey, the, the, the road commission's not cleaning out the ditch in front of my house and it's backing up because the culvert shot. I mean, what are we gonna do here?"
So, the, you're saying that these three individuals, they should go and attend a meeting of the Marquette County Road Commission?
Absolutely.
And make a public comment and bring this?
And let them hear what the road commission has to say with that.
Yeah.
And as far as, and I, and I don't know any of the situation there, but if somebody's trying to build a home in a wetland.
Right.
Have they gotten a building permit yet?
No, they, what they did is they had to file something with Eagle.
Yeah, well, good luck on that.
Well, Eagle is coming out tomorrow, and they're gonna look at her land and so forth.
Well, I'm talking about the, the people that are building, that bought the property, that it's a wetland, and they're looking to, you know, figure out where they're gonna build a home in there. If it's a truly a wetland, they're gonna have a heck of a time getting a home in there.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, that's why they wanna fill in.
I know, but they may not let them, because you can't just fill wetland.
Well, I know, I mean, Eagle controls that.
Yeah, right, and they go, "I don't think so."
But, but so, the, that's the concern, is that they're gonna put so much earth up high and then build their house up there, that everything else is gonna run off on these other people's properties.
Well, and then that's, 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 that's runoff and the same department there is gonna look at it and say, "Where's this water gonna go? It's gonna go in the neighbor's yard." No. I mean, there, there are bodies that approve permits and concepts and that kind of stuff, so I think going through this board is, is gonna, you know, is, is a slow train, train to China, because nothing's gonna happen here.
Okay.
So, if they want to get to some, I would, I would go to the people that are gonna provide the permits, or the people that are gonna fix the roads and have them approach it that way versus doing kind of a roundabout.
As, as part of that wetlands permit through Eagle, there is a required notice, so not a public hearing, but a required public notice period where...
Comments, committee.
Right. That the state Eagle is required to notify neighbors within probably 300 feet. Again, I'm not sure what the exact requirements, but that's, so that's the stage that it's at, that there has not been any, and I looked through our files today just to double check, that there has not been any zoning compliance application or building permit application or anything with us at the township for this construction or this proposed development.
Well, the, the hearsay is, is that, uh, these are, uh, people who live in Wisconsin, who are bringing an engineer from Wisconsin and to, you know, and the comment, so the, this woman complained, said to the engineer, she met this engineer, and she said, "Well, you know, if you, if you build it that way, you know, there's, there's gonna be runoff on to my property." And his comment was, "Well, some things can't be avoided." You know, like, we don't give a sh about it. So, that's why, you know, people, and again, I, you know, I was, I was having coffee and then the next day I was walking my dog, and I get three people that, you know, that have agreements and are, and then one of them has already consulted an attorney, so I mean, if there was some kind of coordinating entity that could, you know, I don't know, hey, but okay, that's helpful.
Yeah.
And I would agree, agree with Steve's recommendation.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly do what we can at the Planning Commission level and at the township staff level, but I think that's, I think the best avenue.
Which is probably truly not a lot that they can do.
Being with some of the comments that Roger and John and Jason made in these email chains regarding laws and our authority and parameters and...
One thing I didn't understand is, the, uh, we have a township stormwater control ordinance, correct? That incorporates by reference the county's, uh, I can't remember what it's called, the county's runoff ordinance, something to that effect. It is right in the first paragraph of our ordinance.
Right.
So, I looked at both of them, and there seems to be some leeway that the county can intervene upon request of the township. But that's just my layperson's look at it, I don't know. Anyway, but I'll tell, at least, you know, I kept my promise, I brought it before this board, I got a couple answers, I will relay those answers to these individuals. One thing I would not, I, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to do is to share the emails.
With the...
With these other people, because these were between us.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, you're welcome, I would say, to maybe summarize some of those emails and come up with your own.
Yeah, 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 I'll do that. But I wouldn't wanna, you know, for example, the email from Roger was us, the other email was in between staff and one commissioner, no other commissioner commented, so there's no, was no violation of any open meeting or anything like that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Just, that's good, thank you. I'm done.
You're too well-known out there, Denny. You're gonna start buttoning all over everything.
When I lived in Chicago, I was the president of the board of a condo, a 235-unit condo, and it was a little bit of a pain in the ass, but one good thing about it is the janitor staff always referred to me as Mr. President. Mr. President. So, for six years, I was Mr. President. Okay. All right, all right, let's move on.
Unfinished business.
Where is the agenda here? All right. Unfinished business, none at this time. Correspondence, none at this time. Reports, Township Board report?
None, does not hear.
Okay. Recreation Committee report?
I've got nothing for the road committee. Recreation Committee, they do meet next week. Jason said they will likely talk about a potential pickleball court location around the township, so.
Right. Oh, you know, I wanted to ask you, um, there was a, there was a public, uh, just to backtrack a little bit, there was a public notice in today's paper, yesterday's paper, that the Marquette County Road Commission is taking bids for work on road infrastructure in, in our township. Did you know about that?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, road committee?
Nothing.
Planning and zoning, anything else?
Only thing under planning and zoning, uh, and this was just today, that we received communications from the county planning commission that the solar ordinance amendments, they found those favorable. I don't think they had any comments on them regarding any changes or anything. Uh, so Jason and I will work to get that on the township board's agenda for next week. Um, as you recall, the township board does have the option to call another public hearing if they wish, um, so I'm not sure if they will or not. But that's kind of the final step, so.
Is, can they, that's an interesting point. Can the county, so having passed by the planning commission and gone to the county, and then back to the township board, is this on anything, and any new ordinance that the, the township has the option of either having a public hearing or not having a public hearing?
The board has the option.
The board.
Call on if they wish.
But they could, they could simply adopt what the planning commission recommended?
Yep.
Okay.
So, it could be adopted next week.
What if the, what, what, what if it was an instance where the county planning commission recommended against this?
Too bad.
Right. But I...
I mean, would they, I know the, the township has a right to go ahead anyway, but would they have to kind of have a public hearing or not?
The township, you're saying?
Yeah.
Um, it would probably be in the best interest if they, say, the county planning commission made a series of recommended changes.
I see, okay.
And it might, exactly, it might be in the township's best interest to then call a public hearing to make sure that those are considered.
Are they more of an, it's more of an advisory role than, than actually, they can't veto it, obviously?
The county?
Yeah.
Right, it's...
Kind of like a courtesy.
Right.
Yeah, we're letting them know what we're doing. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Seeking their expertise as well on the matter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, okay, moving on to item, uh, number 10, any announcements? Any public comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Did the county have any comments on the, uh, the report?
I have not seen that communication, we just received it today, so I am unsure, but that's something I can maybe follow up with you on if they do have, if they did make any suggestions.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
Additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, county fair this weekend. Yeah, bunnies and rabbits and chickens and ducks, yeah. Corn dogs, yeah.
All the good stuff.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Okay, we will adjourn this meeting at 7:41.